Okay, I'd like to call the planning board meeting of May 4th to order. First order of business we have in front of us tonight, let's order due to meeting for the last minutes and upon no objections or modifications, I will entertain a motion All right, everyone who has no objection or objections, I'll just give you a motion to accept the minutes into the record.
How many got it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, tonight's agenda, full agenda, this is the most people I've ever seen here in my tenure at planning board chairman, so if there's anything further to do, let us get started. First order of business tonight we have in front of us, Mary Jean Yango and family would like to present an application for a variance request to construct addition behind their existing home on Park Avenue. So I would like to offer the floor to Mr. Barone, I believe.
That's correct, thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mary Jean and Jack Yango, they're in the audience tonight, if you have any questions, they're happy to answer them.
Is that on?
Is the mic on?
No, we don't normally have the mic on, but we can turn it on for you since we have so many bodies in here.
It's not on.
All right.
There you go.
All right, I'll switch.
Thank you. Anyways, I'm your representative, Jack and Mary Jean Yango, they've been residents of the building for Webster for twenty-five, forty, four years, over forty years. They've been staying throughout sixty-three Park Avenue. They called me a couple months ago to put an addition on their house. They want to stay in that house, they love that house, they love that neighborhood. They need a first floor mansion. That's the trend, aging in place is the trend. They also want the first floor one. We had Tom Pellet draw up the plans, the original size, the addition is twenty foot by twenty, or twenty-two by twenty-two. Not excessive, all right. We put an addition on their house forty years ago. That's how old they are. So anyways, I was honored that they called me to do this addition after I did it working on forty years ago. Tom Pellet drew up the plan and when Will Barron looked at the original application, we had a taped location map that we were working off of, so we took the responsible decision to get an instrument survey down to the property, make sure our setbacks were correct. They are, setbacks were fine. Well, then Tom Pellet called me with bad news, he says, "We have too much lot covered." Twenty-five percent is allowed, you're between thirty and thirty-one percent. So the variance is asking for thirty-one percent, just to give us a fraction of percent of margin there. So, you folks all have a copy of the plan and so on. We looked at trying to make the room smaller, but to meet code would be ridiculous, we just wanted to wind up an eight by ten bedroom. The bedroom now, as proposed, is fourteen by sixteen outside dimensions, so it's not huge, so we really don't want to reduce that. So what we're requesting from the zoning board of appeals, and of course we have come through the planning board first, is a variance for all thirty-one percent lot coverage instead of twenty-five percent allowable. If you have any questions.
I live on Park Avenue, I've known Yango since I've been there, so I'm going to defer the questions of the board. Do you have any questions? If they don't cover any of the topics that I'm looking at, then...
I have any questions, you set out all the areas to everybody within five hundred feet.
We did, we saw, thank you, I didn't notice. I couldn't believe it, but what I did, the town of Webster answered program in the accessory's office, and you say, "I need everybody within five hundred feet of the boundaries of this property," and you said, "You're not going to believe this." Yep, ninety-five names yet, some of the people are in California, so I don't think they showed up tonight.
Did you get any response?
We didn't get any responses from anyone.
So no objection, though?
No objections. Matter of fact, I believe Mary Jean said that she submitted some paperwork tonight with signatures of neighboring property owners indicating that they were in favor of support for our project, as reported.
Just for the boards know, it's Will, those in fact have a signature sign of for the respondents.
Mostly placed signs out at the property, so if anybody has a question, they can always call the village.
Of course, we have appeared before the zoning board of appeals also.
So, aesthetic finishes, obviously, I would make the assumption that everything will match the house, or be keeping with our existing house.
Our goal is to have the addition not look like an addition, but look like it's part of the building, match the side, match the road. We're going to do a reverse gable on the back coming out, so it's going to be aesthetically clean and even from the rear. You can't really see the addition from the road, but even from the back, it will be a nice looking addition.
Slavon gray, no, some basement, basement.
It's going to have a crawl space. The addition we did forty years ago has a crawl space as well, so it'll match it. It's going to have its own heating system, we took it so far away from furnace in the house that we're going to put its own furnace in our addition system in that room.
So the addition is going to be having...
Have, it's going to have its own heating air conditioning.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody have any thoughts? I see thumbs up. Does everyone think that aging in place is a good thing, to keep our good folks in the village?
Yes.
Alright, that's what I like to see, unanimous. Okay then. If there are no other questions or comments? Any final thoughts from the board?
No good points, I mean, no questions, Roger?
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion for positive recommendation to the extra village zoning board of appeals for a variance for thirty-one percent lot coverage for the construction of a single-story addition at the sixty-three New Lock Avenue.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. I've got to say, I was a little worried when I saw all these people, "Oh my God."
Did you think they were going to line up next to you? Okay, our second order of business, our second order of business today, we have...
Unless you want to go?
No. Mark and Kayla Picardo of two thirty-seven Judson Street, understand new residence to the village, and they would like to construct an accessory structure of one hundred and twenty square feet in lieu of the one hundred square foot maximum size accessory structure allowed by village code. Mark and Kayla, present your case.
Hi, my name is Mark Picardo, my wife Kayla, we're both teachers, Kayla actually teaches over at like Solomon's Elementary. We moved into the village in January and beautifully cut into the building. And we want to make sure that we take care of the yard, the outside and everything, and with the home's layout, the one car garage and the finished basement and whatnot, we need the extra storage for the lawn mowers and for the things where you're doing our own landscape and we're having the lawn redone. So the area is a hundred square feet, but the extra room will really help us out to have the equipment that we need. So, this is the variance, just for the extra one hundred square feet. Okay. I haven't had to answer any questions. We have, so has the signatures of seventeen of our neighbors, no objections. We're happy, everybody's been happy to help out our neighbors with the equipment that we have.
Careful!
I have a question as a neighbor, I just wondered if I could store my lawn mower, if I have room.
I personally have no objection to a twenty square foot, eleven square accessory shed structure. I mean personally, I believe that the one hundred square foot allowance is small, considering how big everything is these days. So, unless someone else on the board has violent objections, yes?
No objections.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
I have no problem.
All right, public comment? Anybody in the village, in the surrounding area, have any issue with the twenty square foot variance? Mr. Mayor?
No, I have absolutely no objection, and just to piggyback on their comments, I just want to let everyone know that they take fantastic care of their lawn and their house and, you know, I have absolutely no problem with twenty additional feet, nor would I have problems with fifty additional feet, they just have a huge lot and the shed that they're proposing sits way back in the corner of the lot, so I think it's great. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, the zoning board is actually looking into changing the code from a hundred square feet to a hundred and twenty square feet, or changing it per zoning area, because like, for instance, the old village area we call, their lots are a little smaller, but some of the other areas have bigger lots, like the ones over in what we call Du Shans in the Shans area, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you, Will. Mayor, public comment? And that's our last thing from the board. Okay, then I will be ready to entertain a positive recommendation to the extra village zoning board of appeals for a twenty square foot variance for the construction of a one hundred and twenty square foot accessory structure on the existing property, two thirty-seven Judson Street. If anyone care to make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next up, zoning board of appeals. Okay, the next order of business, and I will beg Mr. Anep's indulgence and Brittany Wood's team, if you wouldn't mind if I change up the agenda real quick, move number four into number three slot, because you guys are going to be a little bit more involved, we can deal with that. Fourth item, hopefully quickly, and then we will have our full...
Sure thing.
Thank you. All right, so the next order of business will be to hear Mr. Eugene Staubus's presentation for his proposal to demolish an existing home structure at eighty-seven Kirchner Park.
Hi, my name is Fred Staubus, and I'm Eugene's brother, and I have his power of attorney and stuff, so I can legally speak for him, I guess. There's a home on eighty-seven Kirchner Park, my brother has lived here in Webster for about forty years in that home, and working with the building inspector, Will's been a real blessing to have made the decision to tear the home down. And I believe, you know, we did an application, I believe, that was probably submitted to this group, professionals, so you're aware of that, and going to demolish the home, and I anticipate the question as well, what's going to happen to the lot? And of course, based on approvals of this board, I'm sure I have a representative of Habitat for Humanity here, and my brother would like to donate that home to that organization. It's in a wonderful spot in the village, I did some growing up here from fifth grade through sophomore in high school, went to RLT in Ridgecrest, elementary, so I'm a little bit familiar with the area. So that's what, I mean, we really hope we can forge ahead on that, it's not just a thought to go with Habitat, I mean, that's what we'll do, you know, if we're allowed to forge ahead and get this home demolished. Also, just for your edification, the wrecking contractor, we've already signed a contract with that company pending, of course, you know, your approval, and ready to move ahead as really as soon as we can. I've been here for about six months, no, about three months, helping my brother out, I actually live in Colorado now, and I don't know if this is good or bad, I was in Boy Scouts with Billy Southwell, so that was, that's pretty neat, I hope to run into him while I'm here, so, I don't know, if there's anything else I should mention or any questions, just let me know.
All right, so basically, your desire is to demolish the house and turn it back into a lot?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, so part of demolition, obviously it has to conform to your state code rule fifty-six, because of the existing asbestos within the home, there is a provision in code rule fifty-six which says you can demolish a home in place with asbestos in place, there are certain protocols that you have to follow, I'm sure the wrecking company, I understand, Empire Wrecking, in their contracted choice, they are familiar with the process, they would have to follow your state protocols. But first and foremost, and I don't know if this has been done yet, is, the provision in code rule fifty-six is predicated on a written letter of condemnation? So is the structure, you've written off on it and says it is condemned?
Well, I am pending the board's approval, I will be sending that letter. I already have a file on the property, my inspection report, and based on the inspection report and the evidence that I have, I can write the letters to your city.
Okay, so in far as you're concerned, you do not see any other recourse to save this structure?
No, no, I'm, by training and profession, I am an engineer, an architectural engineer. I do now, since I've been retired, a lot of home repair, et cetera, for people, I know how to estimate the costs, and we think the best thing for, because of the state of the property, is to demolish it and let someone start anew there through, you know, through Habitat, basically. And for your edification, Will's been very good at educating me and along with the wrecking contractor, we've also signed a contract with the QA QC air monitoring folks, that's also been taken care of again pending this board's decision.
Right, that's all part of the code rule fifty-six, protocols that have to be followed. So, does the board have any questions? As far as you're concerned?
You're going to demolish it? Is there a way to rebuild?
Well, right now, we're in really preliminary discussions, we intend to donate it to an organization and...
The WEP.
And Habitat has the first shot at it.
The WEP.
Yes, I'm sorry. Well, certainly, until it's turned over to another owner, I know that there's the expectation, the covenants of the village to, you know, mow the yard, take care of it and maintain it, certainly, and we'll see to that until such time that hopefully, you know, we can get it to an organization and donate.
Can you create slabs going up to the house? Are you also taking those out, are you...
We're taking the sidewalk, yes, the sidewalk...
Going up to the house?
Going up to the house, also the old foundation for a one-car garage that was there, and my understanding is, according to the covenants, that the driveway, the driveway does not have to be demolished, and that would kind of be dependent, if Habitat is interested, if they want it there fine, if not, we'll put that right into the contractor's scope to demolish it, so, does that answer your question?
Are you going to leave the existing trees?
Yes, there's, yeah, there's no, it's a good question, but no, there's no trees proximal that have to be taken down with the house demolition.
Okay.
Has the historic committee...
He's about to ask the same question I was asking.
The historic committee been notified to rule one of this?
They are aware of the situation, and if the board votes for a positive recommendation for the issuance of a demolition permit, it will be predicated on a sign of approval of the historic committee to say that there is...
My project was held up for about six months waiting for that letter, that never seemed to come from the historic.
They are aware of the situation, they don't need a few more weeks.
I notified the president of the historic commission.
I'm sorry?
I notified the president of the historic commission by a phone call, and we just missed their last meeting that they had, so they're not having any meetings for two, maybe three this time.
Okay, so I guess, any other comments, Mr. Grant?
What are the structural problems? Is the foundation buckled, or what?
Yeah, there are major cracks, and when I say major, they're about three-quarters of an inch to an inch at three of the four corners all the way around the house, a major beam is out, that holds the support beam, or a major post is out that holds the support beam, which is for the major part of the structure for all three floors, and the roof itself has had a hole in it for I don't know how long, and it has allowed the elements to come through, and you can see where the water has just made its way down each and every floor, compromising the joists, the rafters, the floors, everything all the way through.
So in your professional opinion, having been through rough structures in your tenure, she's a donor?
Okay.
I have a quick question. What is that architectural salvage, is there any of that in the house?
I guess to the best, it's a very conventional, older type home, I do not know of anything or have seen anything very ornate.
It doesn't have to be ornate. How old is the house?
Well, I don't know, Jean, no. Forty, I think it was forty, fourteen, fourteen?
Well, people buy doors, old doors, mantelpieces.
It was built in nineteen fifteen.
Yes, it was built in fifteen, yup, nineteen fifteen.
There could be things there, though, what's saying? I just bring that up.
Well, and Will was in there with me, so he's more of a...
There's, without getting into detail, there's more than structural issues, I'll just leave it at that, it's sanitary issues.
To this lady's point, though, there is a local company that would be more than happy to just go in and see if there's anything salvageable.
It would be unsafe for anybody going in front of it.
It's the same.
So the condemnable nature of the property would overshadow any hope of anybody working their way through that property?
Put it this way, one of my responsibilities to the fire department is to notify them of a structure that's vacant, and we notify them verbally by letting them know the condition of the house, and also, I'm waiting for my sign to come from the sign company to repost it. You have three different types of sign, you have a sign that's just a square, the red in the middle and the white background, or the white border line, that says, okay, there's no structural issues in here, you can enter the house if something's going on and you can take care of the fire. Then there's the next sign that has the line that goes through that says, okay, you have to be careful, there's some structural issues, but it's still okay. Then there's a sign that says, do not go in, this is a let it burn house.
So then, the answer to your question is, there may be things, but nobody's going in to get them, and nobody will be allowed to go in to get them just because of the nature of the structure itself, so. Okay, if there are no other comments from the public, let's take it back to the board. If there are no other comments, then what we can do here tonight is, we can make a positive recommendation, sorry?
Do you need a seeker motion?
Just...
Where is that? Yeah, the seeker passes, we don't go on the training for that to be, but, all right, so before we entertain a motion, I need to quickly go through the seeker application here, and just make sure everything is as it should be, applicant was listed Eugene Staubus, demolition of the home. All right, so upon council guidance, I can entertain a motion for type two seeker.
I have a question.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we can make the recommendation for the issuance of a demolition permit with the one stipulation that the historic commission actually gives a final signature sign off, and then Will, you can issue the demolition permit, and then Staubus just can go about their business, and you will be overseeing the process.
Yes.
As it happens. All right, so I will entertain a motion for positive or negative recommendation for the issuance of a demolition permit of eighty-seven Kirchner Park.
I make the motion for a positive.
Positive or negative? Positive recommendation for the issuance of a demolition permit, eighty-seven Christian Park?
Yes, second.
Do you need seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. The one condition is final approval of historic commission.
Well, thanks for letting us move ahead. I greatly appreciate that.
Unfortunately, the historic commission signs off on it permanently. Once that's done, then we can proceed with the permit, take care of it and then... Now, the property will be completely demolished, removed, foundations restored to a level lot.
Yes. I mean, the only reason I'm hesitating, if Habitat wants it, wants the donation, we'll see what they want. Right now, the scope is to simply a slight dome over where the existing foundation is to account for any settling and seed it.
Well, you want to remove the foundation in its entirety, correct?
The foundation, my understanding from the wrecking company, is collapsed, folded, if you will, into the basement. That's the standard procedure for that, I understand.
Well, we can do it, we can, you know, give them an alternate to completely remove the foundation. Initially, this price, we were just going to break the foundation up and then fill the remaining void with, you know, a compactable fill.
The problem with thinking you can do that is the fact that once you've done all the house with asbestos in place, you contaminate the foundation, so you cannot leave behind a contaminant in sight.
The masonry is cleanable. We can get clearance on the masonry basement. And then, once we get clearance, we can carry the foundation.
This is administrative stuff that can be handled at the permit level.
Okay.
So, we'll handle this.
The bottom one is, obviously, you will have to conform to New York State Code Rule fifty-six, you're participating in Code Law, so if that makes everything be gone and everyone take off. Okay, now, the final order of business this evening is Mr. Mark Van Epp, developer of the Britten Woods Townhomes Project. Would like to discuss family residential properties on thirteen point four acre site on Philip's Road and-
Ridge.
Ridge. So, for the benefit of people who are here tonight who may not be fully aware of the full project, if you would give us the full version of your proposal.
Great, good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Snolink, I'm an attorney. And I am here on behalf of the applicant, Mark Van Epp. And I have Nathan from TY Lynn, he's our engineering firm, he's working with us on this project as well with the people here tonight. He's got some exhibits and stuff like that. So, the project relates to property that is on the corner of Ridge and Phillips, as was just mentioned, is currently owned by Wagmans. And so, my client is under contract with Wagmans to purchase the property. We recently, over the past six months, went through the zoning process. And in March of this year, the property was rezoned by unanimous vote of the village board to go from a planned unit development to residential, RM. And so, with that unanimous vote, that opened up the way, the path for my client to move ahead with his proposed project. And the project will be a seventy-unit townhome apartment complex. And my client currently has two existing projects that will be similar in nature. One's on Chi-Ali, one's out in Gates. I have in my materials, which I provided to the board, photos of those properties which show the high quality that my client brings to his properties. Not only would my client be developing these properties, but also be managing it and also maintaining. So, this is not a build it, sell it off, this is build it, I'm going to own it. And so, what we're seeking here tonight is an area of variance for the property. As I noted, the property, the zoning was recently changed to residential and under the village code for, as it pertains to RM, and as it pertains to townhomes, the village code says that there should be, or there has to be, one acre per townhouse building. And so, the way we have set it up and the way our site plans call for it and what has been discussed since we first proposed this project that last summer was that we would be looking to do fourteen townhouse buildings. And so, the real property in question that we're talking about is thirteen point four acres. So, the request is that instead of the requirement being one acre per townhouse building, we're seeking a variance to allow one townhouse building per zero point nine six acres. So, the request, again, from one acre to point nine six acres per townhouse building. So, I'm sure a lot of folks have questions. We sent out our mailing. I don't know how many neighbors we had, the list was a couple of pages. But, so we sent out, obviously, our notice, all the neighbors. And, you know, a lot of the folks who are here tonight have been at our prior meetings. We had, you know, we had a couple of meetings before the village board to discuss the zoning. We actually also did an open house back in, back in March, where myself and our engineer answered questions from neighbors about the actual project. And, you know, I happen to have pneumonia that week, so I was only here for about forty-five minutes. But, our engineer, Jack, who's also with TY Lynn, was here for two or three hours answering questions. And we had a decent turnout, not as big as tonight, but we had a decent turnout in the week. We sat and Jack, you know, and myself answered the questions of the concerned neighbors. So, the other point is that, you know, what we're, again, what we're doing tonight, when everyone's thinking about their questions, what we're doing tonight is we're asking just... The scope is limited to this variance. So, can we build fourteen buildings on thirteen point four acres is the scope. So, can we have, will the village, will the board recommend a variance of one building per point nine six versus one building per one acre? That's really the scope. We're allowed to build, and we still have to go through the site plan approval, of course, but, you know, per the code, we're allowed, per the current zoning, to build townhomes on this land. We are allowed to build townhomes on this land. It's just how many. So, when we're looking at the benefit versus any potential detriment, you know, the benefit, we, you know, we've gone over that at prior meetings between, from the village board and the Webster, I had a read to make sure I get the name right. Webster Economic Development Alliance, most people have issued a nice write-up on the proposed project. According to their write-up, the townhouse building plan will increase the value of real property that's currently assessed at, I think, three hundred thousand, maybe four hundred thousand. We believe the value of the property, once developed, will, you know, be between eight and a hundred million dollars. So, the benefit, so the benefits of the village is the increased tax dollars. That's, you're going from a very small tax liability that Wagmans is paying right now to a potentially pretty large tax liability that my client will be happy to pay because we're all paying taxes. On top of that, you know, it's going to increase the foot traffic to Main Street. As we talked about in prior meetings, there's a lot of businesses that are failing on Main Street and there needs to be an influx of dollars and of people into the village of Webster. And I know what's going to raise, so when you're thinking about questions, again, that's what the scope is. Certainly, ask any question, but remember that's the scope. There will be further meetings on this. There's going to be, even if this gets approved, then then go to the next round, will be site plan. And site plan will be really the main decree of this project will be moved by the planning board. At that point, certainly, we weren't ready for any questions about this and then in the future about that. The question then, because we know we can build thirteen buildings, right? We all know there's thirteen point four acres consensus, we can build thirteen buildings. So, why do we need fourteen buildings? Why do we need this variance? And so, you know, as I said, the proposal from the beginning related to this, to our plan for the fourteen buildings, all of the analysis that was done by the Economic Development Alliance is based on the idea of this fourteen-building project. But there's also physical reasons why a fourteen-building project has to, is our only option going forward and why we need this variance. And so, I'll turn it over to Nathan to give his one-on-one on that.
Sure. So, the physical- So, the physical restraints on this property, we have wetlands on both sides.
Turn the mic on.
Sure. So, I'll talk about, basically, so we have wetlands on this side of the site, we have wetlands over here. This portion of the property is really unvoluble due to setbacks, et cetera. We also need to align our driveway here across from, you know, the roadway for best access practices. Also, as a recommendation from the village was to provide pedestrian access through the site. So, separating the buildings is desired. And, you know, due to degrading restraints also leads to having us be extra building on the property. So, that's really it.
Just one question.
Yep.
Where is Phillips Road there?
Phillips is right here, on the top.
So, you're trying to be accessing right across from Heartland Estates?
Yep, right here.
Are we going to have a light there?
Ridge Road is right here.
Okay.
Did anybody ever do a traffic study?
Yes, yes.
You got Xerox, you got the look building, you got it. I haven't seen the cords going across the highway looking for traffic.
Sure, that exact question was raised at multiple hearings that we had before the village board. Yes, the traffic study was done and it was found that it would not, and again, I'm not what the vision are doing, but it was found that there would not be a significant increase in traffic. You know, I mean, I guess my only, my, just my best point is, again, as to, you know, what we're talking about here. We're talking about a variance. I would view this, I would view this request as a diminished variance request. It's a small, we're talking about point zero four acres is the variance request. Exactly, exactly, thank you. We're not here for a site plan approval. There will be site plan approval in June, should we make it through this hurdle. Again, this is simply for the variance request, so, thank you.
So, if memory serves correct, early on when this was first brought to the board, wasn't it we who asked you to break up the townhouse row along Phillips Road into smaller chunks instead of one gigantic block of rowhouse structure, which thus now forces you into a variance?
Correct, correct, right. So, one of my points was that, that was kind of in every conversation we've had with the village was about the way we were doing it, it's always been this structure since we've had our conversations.
I just wanted to test my understanding that, you know, the design, this is not the original design. The original design was one building per, or less. And then, from an aesthetic perspective, we proposed to you to say, break it up. And then, that brings us to where we are today, the need for a small variance request for the additional building.
Correct.
The total site area doesn't accommodate fifteen acres.
Correct. Thank you for bringing it up.
It's going to look like that, it's not going to look like that. Oh, it's going to look like this.
Any other comment?
Oh, sorry.
So, is anyone else from the board having a question for the general?
Well, we have to move it back so we can see it. Thank you.
Well, my question would be probably something to have with due traffic issues.
Right, and I don't know that I submitted it in these materials, but I can submit that, and it'll... I'm sure our Jack, our other engineers submitted that with this proposed site plan, but I can supply the board with the traffic stuff. It was given when we went through the ZAR. Is it in there? Is it in my, it's in my material.
It's in there.
It's in there. I apologize that the materials might be. I won't apologize about the philosophy.
There's a lot of material.
If you want, I can see my copy if you want.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
See, I didn't hear that. He is a goddamn liar.
This is like the process of your question. You actually changed the plan, the place we, what we asked the village.
Before you go to that, yeah.
How many separate units are going to be, you're going to have fourteen buildings, but how many apartments, if you will, are co... I mean, how many people can live in this place?
Is that for, I'm sorry, are we to address the questions or how does that work?
I will open it up to public comment. Please raise your hands, state your name and your address.
Hey, my name is John Nardi, I live in the state right across the street from the, where the Heartland Estates, where they own a building. My concern is one traffic because it's bad there now, but apparently they've done a study, although I've never seen the cords going across the road. But, you know, we get an awful lot of traffic there for Xerox, from Phillips, from our, we have forty-some units for we live. I don't know how many in Phillips, but there's hundreds, I guess. And these people are proposing even more, which I didn't know, but you had already granted, and I must have missed the meeting, the authority for these people to build there. So, all I'm asking is how many units are there going to be? Not buildings, units. So, it gives you an idea how many people are going to-
There will be seventy, seventy-one.
Seventy-one, seventy.
Yep, and, you know, and now I was saying the seventy-one. And, yeah, this was, I believe, you know, in other, you know, I think the reason, you know, a lot more folks know about tonight's meeting is because we sent out the mailer. The request for the zoning that was published in the Herald, so I guess read the Herald.
Are we open?
We're open.
All right. I'm Don Woody, I live on the corner of Phillips and Ridge. Well, not quite. Seventy-five feet in from Phillips Road, that's my property. I see that, that used to be green the last time. I, I see that, that used to be green the last time we were here. Would you turn around maybe we can all look at it? You see what I'm talking about?
Here, here, over here.
Up there, right there on the corner of Phillips, that's not Phillips. Ridge and Phillips.
Ridge and Phillips. Right where your finger is, right there. There you go.
Well, whatever, that, yeah, it's from the corner in, seventy-five feet.
In the first property, past the-
All right, is that part of this project or is this going to be just turned loose to let grow?
What's that? This corner?
That's seventy-five feet by three hundred and thirty.
Yeah, that's going to stay the way it is.
Pardon me?
It's going to stay.
Stay what?
Trees, whatever's there now, it's not going to be developed.
Yeah, but whatever it is now is not what it's going to be because I'm not going to finish or not going to take care of it, all right? So I'm taking care of this. Now, if this goes through, then I'm just going to let it grow. So that'll be a woods, just like you see on the backside, the south side of the property. So that's what it's going to be, it's going to be a, uh, a woods. Is that okay?
Was there a question?
We haven't determined that yet.
All right.
We haven't determined that yet.
Yeah, I heard there might be a driveway there.
Well, you've got to determine that.
We're not at that stage yet, sir, we're not at the planning board yet.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I just wasn't sure, was it, was that a question or just a, just public comment?
The last meeting we had here, the answer was that, uh, that the way it's being taken care of now is the way it will be. And I said, no, it won't, because I'm the one that's taking care of it.
So, okay, so-
And somebody promised it would be, somebody promised it would be a moat or-
Yeah, it's always, always will take care of it, it's, you're not-
Yeah, right, I've heard that story before, you, I know a lot of people.
Well, you know, sir, you know, the, the one thing I know, I mean, it has been vacant forever. And so, yes, neighbors like, like yourself have had, have had to take on their responsibility. I certainly sympathize with you, uh, in that regard, but, you know, my client coming in, um, is going to be developing this. And certainly, it's going to be his responsibility to, to maintain it. And I know that, that the, that the planning board and, and it is going to make sure that, um, and, 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 and the village of Webster makes sure that, that he does maintain it. We have every intention of it.
I guess what he's saying is that will no longer be, you will no longer be allowed to maintain that property because it will be Mr. Dime Ebs's property.
I would call by weakness to stay off of it forty-five years ago. But, but, uh, it never did work, you know, but, but that's all, whatever, whatever happens. I have not, I'm not going to be around long enough before these things are built, but that's, that's another story. Let it go, let it go. But you ought to put that green in there. Last, the last map or layout I had, it was green. It was nice, you're going to turn it over to the perimeter by or some stupid thing, we got it.
Well, there is, there is a, there is a provision in the village code also for it to be developed into a amenity to the village. That has still, that is still to be explored. But that is not germane to, and task in front of us tonight is to get through the recommendation to the zoning board for granting the variance for the number of buildings per, with a lot size, so. You, sir, have a question?
Okay. Just a quick question for my own edification. I had missed the last few meetings on, uh, Bruno Ghostman, fourteen sixty-three Ridge. Just curious, out of the whole, uh, property, what, uh, percentage is being developed? How much has to stay? Uh, wetlands and where are the proposed retaining ponds located as to addresses on Ridge Road?
Sure. Um, so basically, as you can see here in, in blue are going to be the stormwater detention and infiltration basins, um, which is going to be located on, I guess, the northeast corner of, of the, of the lot.
Any, any idea where that corresponds to existing homes on Ridge Road, number wise, or not?
Um, sure, so basically it'd be almost behind fourteen forty-four on Ridge Road to fourteen thirty-seven.
Okay. And it's, what's the size of the whole property? I mean, I know you're developing thirteen point, uh, four, right? And, I mean, what, what's the total property?
The total developable property size is thirteen point four acres.
So that's, okay, so that's, the, the wetlands are, or the areas that you can't develop aren't part of the-
Part of that total acreage.
That's total acreage. So, the, the, the area behind is not part of the property that you own or you own it and you can't develop it?
The area here, or?
Yeah, on, behind the houses and where, you know, in between the, the retaining ponds and the, the homes on Ridge Road.
Sure, uh, yeah, over on this area, there's, there's wetlands, same with over on this, this side. And this area with setbacks and everything, you really can't put buildings in there, so.
Okay, and, and that's, I mean, just for now or, or is that something that might come in later? I mean, it's, is it anymore going to be developed in between the retention ponds and the homes behind Ridge Road or is that non-developable?
That's, would not be developable because of setback.
Because of setbacks, okay.
To the property, to the existing property.
Okay, so as far, as far up, you said fourteen?
Fourteen forty-one.
Forty-one, okay.
I, I'm looking at your print, you're, you're pointing out that much of the area which you didn't shade in for this one is wetlands. Uh, and you say there's certainly seventy-one units, some of them are two or three bedroom. I think we said some are three bedroom. This implies that there will be kids. So you're telling me there's wetlands, which of course, some boys may play in, but the basic play area is that narrow strip of land along Ridge, or along Phillips Road, where we can play ball and chase our baseball, footballs and that kind of stuff all the way to the street. This is the only area being provided for any kids to do anything in because it's going to be the only open area, it's not wetland. So it basically, that becomes the only play area for the kids that will be living here. So I think it'd be better off to eliminate one unit. The one that would be most logical is the one there on the north side, next to the ponds and make a small play area where kids can do something because you put that many kids in that tight area with no place to go. You're asking for a trouble.
So first of all, there's not that many three-bedroom buildings.
Two bedrooms is going to have kids.
There's not going to be that many kids. And, and, uh, kids do not play outside anymore. They don't play ball, they don't-
It's mostly, the, the community, uh, if it mirrors which we just-
School, I've heard a different, they had a lot of that.
Sir, I already have a couple communities and they don't play outside.
Do we want to, I just-
If they're just tight, they would have no room. If they play outside, there's no room.
So, um, I mean, if, if, if the development mirrors our, our, our project in Chi La Engage, you know, our, our, we, there won't be very many, uh, nuclear families. It'll be mostly, um, you know, your twenty and thirty-something, um, young professionals, um, with not a lot of kids. We don't anticipate there being a lot of kids. So not like every single unit we have has two kids. That's not, you're not looking at a hundred and fifty kids, okay? You're looking at probably, you know, I'd say, I don't know, Mark could probably tell me better, how many units actually do you get on other properties?
Well, nobody's going to want to bring kids there, they have no place to play.
That was-
So you're definitely discriminating against families.
Certainly, you know, families are, are welcome, non-families are welcome too.
There is an alternative, uh, for, for, for the developer, however, Harry Park, right there, uh, is a big open area and the kids can play with us.
Probably three or four acres over there also, playing ball. And the basketball courts down probably.
And it's owned by the village. So it was part.
Family friendly.
You want to leave in the back? Yes. I'm Laurel Brunz, oh, I'm here, right. I'm Laurel Brunz, fourteen fifty-five Ridge Road. Um, I just want to say that I think seventy-one, um, townhomes on thirteen point four acres is excessive. It needs to be, you need to, um, consider saving some green space. And also including that, um, around the boundaries of property lines. Because we are, I'm very much concerned about noise and trespassers. And we have dealt with them before and this is going to add to that problem and the noise too.
So I, I think as we, as we, as the board mentioned before, um, there's a way to have seventy-one units in thirteen buildings.
That isn't what I was saying. I'm saying is seventy-one units on thirteen acres is excessive. And it needs to be cut back and you need to save some green space.
So we're, so legally, um, in our original plan was thirteen buildings and seventy-one units. And there's no, nothing in, in the, in the code that would prohibit us from doing that.
But you're, you're here tonight to put more in.
We are here tonight to request-
You want to expand it from one acre per house, you want to make it to point nine six per house.
Right, and that was-
And I'm just saying that the whole thing is excessive. It's too many homes for that size lot.
And so, uh, as we, as the, as the board had mentioned, uh, as, uh, Chris had mentioned, I can't pronounce your last name, but I'm not going to try it. I'll just call you Chris if that's cool. As Chris had mentioned, the original plan was thirteen buildings. The village had requested that we change it to fourteen buildings. So regardless of thirteen or fourteen, we've done thirteen in the beginning, we could have done seventy-one units. And again, the request is, is, is for a variance, so we could just, we, we could do fourteen units, or fourteen buildings, seventy-one units versus we could have originally planned thirteen units, seventy-one buildings, and we wouldn't be here today. Requesting this variance.
Scott, just for clarification, the plan says sixty-eight units.
Okay.
Just want to be clear of that.
Okay.
I've heard three numbers, so what is it? I think it's number sixty-eight, seventy, or seventy-one?
Is that in what Jack recently submitted?
Since they're all numbered, one through sixty-eight.
Okay.
Yes, the young lady in the back.
Um, so obviously, I would, I would assume you guys are all up to speed on everything that is in the concern of the neighbors. I'm Kimberly Schwensler. Kimberly Schwensler, and I live at fourteen forty-nine Ridge Road. Um, I'm assuming that you guys are all abreast of the situation as to what everyone is in concern about. Two of the major concerns are the wetlands, and I know we're discussing adding an extra unit or not, you know, point nine six acres per acre. However, this is all part of the grand scheme. The wetlands, um, still have, they have not been, um, they have not been chartered in years and years and years. So it's very possible that this development is infringing on those, on those wetlands. But the second thing is, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but many of us neighbors along that creek there, um, experience the cresting of the creek constantly. We're constantly experiencing flooding and things like that. So by adding all this impermeable surface, it's going to really cause a problem for everyone in that downstream, everyone in that area, possibly including the new development. And I know they've done all their tests and all that, but that doesn't, there's all this extra water that had thirteen acres to soak into, um, that is now going away, um, with impermeable surfaces. So I think the whole idea of adding, like, let's see how many units we can fit into our little thirteen acres so we can make as much money as possible. I get they're in the business to make money and they're going to say to us what they want to say to make us, to make, you know, I've been sales for years, I get it. They say, you know, to make us happy. But the fact is, you don't need to completely, um, make it so dense, such a dense, um, space if you're going to build. Because again, it's just going to cause more problems as far as the, um, the flooding and things like that. And again, not to mention the fact that we do not know the exact delineations of the wetlands because it's been so long since it's been done. So it's very possible that the building is not done. So.
Yeah, I mean, I know we've, we've addressed the, the, the drainage and the wetlands, um, at length. As I said, we had several meetings here, we had an open house, um, and, you know, certainly, um, I wish more of you guys were at an open house because we-
We know about it, yeah.
You didn't read the Herald.
Yes, we need to read the Herald.
You guys aren't reading the Herald? No.
No.
Well, I mean, by, for, for the board meetings, by law, that's how, I mean, if, if I don't see- So why did you sit on the beach, you know, this is earned the notice for tonight because of, by law, you're senseless? It wasn't by a finish your heart, right? Just answer that question. Uh, we always want to comply with the law, so of course, whatever requirements there are, whatever requirements are, we will follow the law. And so our answer is publication, the, the public, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know, we're going to give them the argument of- No, that's what I can do because- It's important, sir, please. That's certainly a requirement.
Let's not talk over each other.
Well, can I answer that question?
Well, who's my, I-
Chris, so if, if-
Dying tall on me, the young lady in the back.
To argue the point of, of notice, uh, would actually be more appropriate for the, for the, for the village board and for the planning board as to what the requirements are. We, we did what the requirements were.
Okay, so I have been addressed that.
So, yeah.
My whole idea is like to say, why, why, I get it, you're in the business to make money, not to help the village of Webster, you know, they think this is going to be the lifeline that'll help them, which it will not. Um, but just wondering, you know, eliminate a unit, if, you know, why push the envelope? Why do we need to, to re, rezone again for you guys? We had to rezone so you could build, now we have to change the laws so you guys can put an extra unit, like, just build within the laws, like. It's bad enough you guys are coming in, but build within the laws.
But to at least answer two of your questions, um, the wetlands have been delineated and flagged, they're on the survey, um, so we've-
Not by the D E C, by you guys.
Located everything.
By you guys, not by the D E C.
Ma'am, if I may, I am in the construction business. Federal wetlands are very highly regulated. The federal wetland maps are well-known to engineers. When they do building layouts, they know exactly.
They haven't been done since the nineties, all due respect, I call the D E C, that's the problem. They haven't been done since the nineties.
The problem that we perceive is not necessarily a problem. The federal wetland delineations are very well-known to engineers.
Did you hear what I said though? They haven't been done in twenty years or more.
The wetland delineations are very well-known to engineers. When they do building layouts, they know where they cannot go.
I don't think you're hearing what I just said. They have not been done in twenty to thirty years.
I don't think you're listening. The federal wetland delineations are very well-known and defined to engineers. They are mapped out, these are federal documents. Engineers, when they do site plan layouts, know exactly where those federal wetland limitations are and they cannot put buildings in those wetland areas. They cannot make it empty.
Yes, you can, when they have not been remapped in thirty years, they're going by old maps. And if they go in and do it themselves, that doesn't mean it's being done exactly correctly. The D E C, oh my God.
Are highly delineated, well-known documents. It would be up to the United States government and the geodetic survey team, upon request of the United States government, to remap the federal wetlands.
I understand, I think that-
They know where they are.
They grow in thirty years. As of now, I've been there for seven years, they've grown. You see us all who live along the ridge, have seen them grow.
Land can become wet, but in order to meet a federal wetland designation, the federal government will take back upon itself-
Okay, you're talking down to me and you're not understanding that I'm saying they have not been done in thirty years by the government. And you're talking down to me, acting like I don't understand what you're saying.
Can I interject just for a second?
Please do.
Yeah, okay, hang on a second. Did you hire Gene?
Yes.
Okay, explain that, so that you understand, that would be very helpful.
Uh, Gene Flatt with Environmental Resources, what he does is he goes out and walks the site, maps out, flags, and, and the, oh, that was probably done within the last year. Um, so when that, that is done, we then re-survey the points to match our topographic survey. So we know exactly where those are. And then to follow up, Gene sends a report to, uh, D E C, the Army Corps of Engineers, and then they determine the exact determination.
What are, what are Gene's qualifications? What are, what are Gene's qualifications?
Gene has been doing that for, forever.
And he's been hired by you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, hey, I know Gene. Gene does not work for them. He does, he's a-
He's an independent-
He's an independent contractor. Everybody calls Gene to delineate wetlands. He is the go-to guy. The, the D E C highly respect Gene. I can't tell you any more than that, because I know Gene.
If you think there's shit anything going on, why would, why would the wetland be so huge? Like, if I'm gonna property argue-
Let's, let's just, should we move on, if there's, if there's, to have a more public comment, or?
Anybody else?
I, I just wondered, X Y has to be fourteen. You said it has to be. Do you want it to be, or it has to be? That, from the math there, it doesn't make sense to me that it has to be fourteen. I just don't understand where, where you're coming from when you say it has to be fourteen. Because they asked you to make a change into, I'm guessing it's the front row of buildings along Phillips. But that doesn't mean it has to be fourteen. It just means that it can't be one building along Phillips. Yes?
For the, for the proposed number of units, it has to be, as the way that the village has requested, it has to be fourteen.
The village, the village has requested that it has to be sixty-eight units?
No. That's a proposal from the developer.
Okay, so again, the units is, is irrelevant to the number of buildings, in essence. Because we, we have to be thirteen units per thirteen acres. But you're requesting for fourteen units, and you're saying it has to be fourteen. I'm telling you that it doesn't have to be. You want it to be fourteen. So the way you worded it is a little deceptive.
The, the, your proposal all along has been that, that, that number of units. And so, to go from, our proposal was thirteen-
Yes.
And we request that was made to make some alterations, which why we're now at fourteen. So our proposal has always been that number in that range of units. So-
Okay, but it didn't have to be. You could have taken a building out and reduced it to a range.
Based on, based on, based on what is the most, the, based on, based on where our proposal is, that's, that's the number of units that we propose, and that's what makes, in our estimation, this project work. So according to code, your original proposal, you didn't need to come here and request a variance, correct?
Correct.
Your need to request a variance was because in the initial meetings and reviews, it was suggested that you do not have one great big building. From an aesthetic standpoint, would not be acceptable to the board, and they essentially said, break it up.
Correct.
Hence, your need, per code, now you're required, okay, to get that variance requested, right?
Correct.
Uh, no, not necessarily. Under controlled site uses, which is what this is, which, what that means is it falls under the purview of the planning board's approval. In arrangement of buildings, it's, uh, one seventy-five forty-one C one, it says the layout of units shall not, shall not, your attorney, shall not, form long unbroken lines on exterior walls. So if you were to continue with that plan, you would have required a variance to have a long unbroken line.
Okay, fair enough.
That number of buildings now would-
Correct, yeah, it's a-
There would have been a difference.
Yes. Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Barnes. I'm working at Fifth and Fifth Ridge Road, which is east of the project on Ridge Road. I've come to a number of the meetings, the town board meetings, and listened to the developer, it rings, and the engineer. My questions are, my main concern was of the watering, infiltration acts, the relationship to the drainage creek that runs between, behind all of our houses on Ridge Road. In Mr. Mooney's defense, his yard is flooded right now because of our current rain. As well as the engineer for the project admitted how his ignition tanks are supposed to flow down, water takes the least resistance path of resistance. That path is gonna generate right to the existing creek, as well as to the number of large wetlands to the east of the property directly behind them from Phillips Road. My other issues are, and I'm not, don't mean this derogatory to the developer or the members of his team. We've heard this about the number of houses, how much tax money this is gonna bring to the village. Also, I lost one, another up. Oh, and the other thing is guaranteeing what type of people are gonna be in this development. Federal law says you can't guarantee or tell somebody you can or can't live in a facility. He plans on doing that from one of the early meetings by the rent, which is well and good. But after Mr. Menep has decided to retire and gone on, what I'm asking is, we're gonna guarantee to the immediate public and to the village that the property is gonna continue to be maintained. The water problem guaranteed for the people on Ridge Road, how are they gonna maintain, how's the village gonna guarantee their public that that's not gonna overflow? And how are we gonna keep trespassing in the property behind them? Because we have a rampant problem of people trespassing across the properties. I hope I tried to make myself appear if I hadn't asked me a question. And in defense of Mr. Mooney, his seventy-five acres that he had meticulously kept, made it clear to the benefit of the public, and Mr. Menep should trust that a little bit, is that still gonna be kept the same way? Thank you.
I mean, I, I, there was a lot of questions that I've come back to. I mean, as far as what the, the quality you're talking about, is, one part was the quality, or the quality of people? I mean, I could probably, I mean, and this, what we said before, is, you know, the rent, you know, we're gonna be-
How do you guarantee that?
Well, our, our, our project is, is based on, you know, how, how economically we put our project together, and, you know, is an ongoing concern, you know, that's what, that's what we are, that's, that's how we economically are gonna make this project before, in the future, is by charging those rents. So the rents will be, as I said, generally fourteen fifty to fifteen hundred dollars a month. So, can we, can anyone guarantee that in the future, fifty years down the, down the way? I mean, Mark's actually still a pretty young guy, despite his hair color. Still a young guy. You know, he's gonna be wrong for, for a few years, and as I said, he owns on his property. He maintains his property. Can anyone guarantee that in fifteen years, he's gonna sell to someone else and they're, they're gonna decide to drop the rent? Certainly, there's no real guarantee that, that can happen anywhere.
I know, but that's what you're selling.
We're selling what our, and as I said, our, 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 our plan, our goal is to maintain the property, and that's what the plan's gonna be for the, for the future in the property, as long as we own that lot.
I just gotta, one, one thing. Those blue holding ponds there, it looks as though that probably a third of them is in the town. Does anybody know where the town line is? Where the town starts and the village ends? Does anybody know where it is? Point it out.
I believe it's very long, that's here from home.
No, I mean up on the corner of Phillips and Ridge. Where does the town start?
It's right there at the intersection. Right here, down like this?
Oh, follow your lines.
You don't know where it is, do you? You got it.
Yeah.
But you had to be told, right? But those ponds are, some of them are in the town.
No.
No.
Right?
No.
The other part is in the village.
No, they're both in the village.
Pardon me?
Both those ponds would be in the village.
Oh, you just gotta move things over.
Nope.
As it is, they're in the village. Did you? Well, anyway, that's, uh, another thing I was trying to say, you know, it's, it's advantage to the village. It's, it really is, no question about it, thanks, my sir. But I'm that far from the village, but I'm not in the village. Okay? And my next-door neighbor is farther away, farther away. But anyway, what I'm trying to say is, you gotta take, so either, either make it all village or make it all town. I mean, that's a big, we're talking about a big operation here, but, but that's where, that's where you get into trouble. Village and town are, are right there on my line. I look out the window, the dining room window, and there is the village. But I can't get a dying benefit out of it from the, from taxes, right? I don't pay those taxes, which is okay too much. But I won't get any good out of it either.
We can only send a bill.
Mr. Chairman, can I address all that?
Yes.
You can sit down now, you don't have to stand.
You're gonna talk.
Yeah, absolutely.
If he starts talking, you're gonna wanna sit down.
So a creature too, so.
I appreciate the thought.
Okay. Two things about maintenance. First of all, when it comes to the stormwater facility, the village of Webster, ever since Heartland Estates, has entered into maintenance agreements with anybody who has a pond. So like, for instance, North Ponds at the end of Calibiter, all of those ponds, we have a stormwater facility maintenance agreement, and every year, I send a letter out, and an engineer has to inspect the pond and make sure that it's still functioning according to the specs in which it was designed. If it is not, they're required to go in there and clean it up and make sure it does function that way. So that's the first thing. So we, we, and that agreement goes to Monroe County. It's a legal binding agreement that goes with the property and allows us easement access rights that if they do not maintain it, we will enter the property, maintain it ourselves, and charge it back to the owner. That's number one. Number two, the board is also, the planning board is responsible for making sure that the developer provides the planning board some feasible method assuring that all common lands in the development are properly maintained, and such a documented method must be approved by the village board. Such maintenance agreements shall include mowing and other landscape services, removal of snow, and all of the project needs. So that's in our code. Now, am I God? No. Will I know if that thing's gonna flood? Absolutely not. Will I know if that's gonna work exactly the way they designed it? I do not know. I have a book in my office that tells me that that can work, according to engineer specs. Are engineers always right? Class?
No.
Okay. But, but, they all operate under the same rules and function and mathematical formulas that they went to school for. And so, when they design these things, they keep all of that in mind. They have the staff, they're the ones we rely on for their expertise. That's why they go to school. That's why we have doctors. Are doctors always right? No, but you still go to doctors, don't you? Okay. So that being said, we do everything we can within our power to protect you. That's not to say we can cover every single contingency, but we will do everything within our power. And we have laws on the books that protect you. Some of the laws you don't like, but your neighbor likes. So we're, we're gonna do our best as a village to protect you and your properties. Also, thirdly, and the reason I brought this up, because Mr. Mooney reminded me, the town has a copy of these plans, and they're reviewing them as well because of the watershed. It is so close to the town that I wanted to make sure the town was reviewing these plans, and we're going over the engineer specs. As a matter of fact, Ben, or, I wanna, Benway, Jeff Benway, he's a civil engineer himself over at the town, so I respect his opinion and his authority in this as well, so.
Just one X, one, then they're not sure. All that creek, I, I explained a couple times ago. All that creek carries a third of the water from the water tanks all the way down behind our house, okay? And it goes through a hole like that, under the, on your four oh four, which owned, it's owned by the state, okay? So is there, is there any way, if that gets plugged up, they gotta call the state, not the town, not the village. They call the state, and then five hundred trucks show up, and I've seen them happen. They pull up there, and twenty guys are standing around, and one guy's pulling the-
That's our standard operating procedure.
You gotta know it by now. I've seen it all, over sixty years, I've seen everything. But what they gotta do, if you wanna satisfy a lot of people, get the state to open that hole up, to eight feet, just put a tube in there, not that size hole. And that's, that's what it is. You get on and say it. If it, it's, it plugged up the night before last, something was caught into that thing, and it didn't take more, no more than a Christmas tree could stop that hole shooting out. It didn't stop it. Somebody pulled it up, and then the, the water, the water got away. So that, that would solve a lot of problems, and everybody here would probably agree with that. If the wa, if the water's nice, if you can keep it open, but when it sets there, then you're in trouble.
I have a question.
Just a thought.
We've heard about trespassers. You're concerned about trespassers. Where are they coming from? What do you do about them?
Call the police. That's why I'm really concerned.
Don't ask me.
Yeah.
Don't ask me.
So that, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a legal enforcement problem, well beyond the scope of a planning board that are possibly controlled.
I mean, we're town, but we've had break-ins along Farnwood Drive, and you're not sure you know where that is. We bank right up.
So, I mean, so I can say that, um, in, in our, in our, in our projects in Chi-Lai and Gates, I know in the, you know, ten or eleven years since, you know, I started representing Mark, I don't know that I've ever had any, to deal with any issues resulting from any criminal activity. So certainly, we, you know, I, I deal with all the, you know, I deal with all the, all the tenant issues from Mark too. And, you know, I can't recall in my history, in like, the ten or eleven years of us, you know, having to, you know, getting rid of a tenant because of criminal activities. Because that's always a clause in a lease, is that if you're gonna evict someone, if they've been cited, if they, if the police have come to, come to the unit, or they've been got, issued a, issued a citation, that's always a clause in our leases, that we can evict them on that basis. And I, myself, have never brought an action in court to evict someone on that basis. So we, we haven't had that issue. That probably speaks to, you know, the quality of tenants that we've had in those projects, and that's what we hope to have in this plan.
But that's not what we're concerned about. We're concerned about the people that are gonna affect your people. Not the people you're bringing in.
Okay.
It's the people that are gonna affect your people.
So I appreciate your-
I'm serving for you now. We had the problem.
I appreciate your support. You noted, thank you.
The police are up on our street like it's, you know.
I have a question. You mentioned foot traffic to Main Street, from the, from the village to the stores and restaurants. Are you gonna have sidewalks and crossing, you know, extra crossing area that's a little more safe? Because I live right over there, and it's kind of really-
There is, there is potential, all right. I think, you're talking about going up the main street, yeah. Here, right. So the path that they're coming from, the development, is to go now up and down to the north, up the sidewalks, to the signalized intersection, which they have extreme crossing signals, and it should be- And it's existing, so, um, there's no need to have them cross mid-block here, which we call that, between intersections and everything. They would come up, and it would move this way. It would be the safest and best route to the village.
The lady on top down too?
One of the, yes, apologies, I'm sorry. One thing that I, you know, what people are addressing as far as trespassing, as far as, you know, people concerned about the light, the added people, all of that, you know, right now, we've got all woods behind us. You know what I mean? We've got this wonderful open space and stuff like that for a very, very long time. One thought is that the developer, if this project finally does come to fruition and does get a- does get approved by all the levels, putting a line of evergreens or something around the, you know, the entire, the entire development to cut down on light, to cut down on noise, to cut down on people crossing through, cutting, you know, is that something that you guys can require? You know, and that wouldn't cost them that much money to do, but it would help aesthetically for the entire neighborhood, that is part of the reason people don't want it there, you know?
There's a whole point behind public commentary is for you to give us the talking points that we will take back to the developer. When he comes back to us for final site plan approval, we can address those issues with him at that time. Part of the site plan submission for approval will be a full blown landscape plan, that will be part of the submission. So all your comments are, will be noted and will be considered by the board. Just for the education of the public, we are not privy to all the documents that we receive, but for this project, there has been a full blown engineering analysis for traffic control, stormwater management, domestic order and sanitary sewer systems. These documents are thorough, extensive, boring as hell to read, but they are based upon sound, commonly accepted mathematical principles that all engineers use to design projects of this nature. Again, they are theoretical, they are based upon long studied mathematical models, they do soil analysis, they've done test pits to see what the infiltration rate of the soils are. And according to these reports, and I've read every single one of them, in theory, there will be no water leaving this site. So no runoff? That's what the retention ponds are for. All developers are required to control the water on their site. The overflow goes into the town systems eventually, ultimately, if there's a state system, that is the next level, that's where the water goes. Is it infallible? No. Mother Nature can be cruel. As we know right now, the water runs on incredible highs. No developer, no engineer is going to be able to design a project that is foolproof. It cannot happen because Mother Nature cannot be beaten. But using every mathematical engineering tool at their disposal is what they have to use in order to get through these design development processes. And we, as a board, go through all these calculations and with, in consultation with Will, we, as he stated, do everything in our power to make sure that a development of this nature is in the best interest of the village and all of its neighbors. So I don't mean to come off as harsh, but I do want everyone in this room to understand, we do hear you, we listen to you and we will, to the best of our ability, work with the developer to bring the best project to the village of Webster that he can and we can give to the village for now and for the future.
I'd just like to add one comment. All of these documents are public information. You can come in my office anytime you want and view them. If you want me to make copies for you, you got to charge it. But if you want to look at them for free, as long as you want, you can come in and I have all the documents that they were talking about, anybody can come in and view them. It's all public information. I'm done.
So any further comments, questions or issues from the public?
Yes, I promise I'm a good month this time.
State your main complaint.
Oh, sorry, Reynolds Howard, ten forty-one, Fawnwood Drive, actually, right at the bottom there. I was just wondering what their thought of all this, as far as, I mean, I assume they think it's a good thing, I mean, just your, just your general.
No, absolutely. I went as far as to visit Mark's development in Gates. We met numerous times with the engineer and Mark, Mark's been in front of the board probably at least twice that I know of. I attended the, the open house, I met with Mark's engineer, with Will, with our DPW superintendent because I had additional questions with respect to the infiltration ponds. I talked to a gentleman who actually works with Ryan Holmes because I need to educate myself regarding infiltration ponds. And after meeting, we met for probably at least an hour and a half with, with Jack there engineer and I was very satisfied with all the responses I got from everything that I, all the questions I had. And I went to the, his development in, in Gates in the middle of the summer. We had a drought and everybody's lawn were burnt except his development in Gates. It was pristine. I was very, very impressed. I talked to at least, I would say probably three to four other developers throughout Monroe County and asked them if they knew Mark, they all knew Mark and had very positive things to say about him. He has a very good reputation. So from a comfort level with this, with this project, I'm very comfortable with it. I also spoke with probably every business in a multitude of residents, especially in East Main Street and everybody was in paper.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Sure.
I have one last comment I'd like to make. My name is John Nardi, I live in Harlem Estates across from where this project is going to be. I don't have much of a problem now with the project as it's being explained, other than I have, I find fault, I think, with the people on the board. Had a better tolling job should have been done amongst the neighbors that live in that area. I never knew this was even going to happen. He told me I had to read some publication in the village that's out there, it's an office, never heard of it. I've lived here fifteen years and I never knew this was even going to happen until we recently saw the signs that Dean gentlemen put up and he also put some stuff in our mailbox, I guess. But I think you guys should have done a better job of getting, calling the neighbors, just, you know, to make sure everybody was happy. There doesn't seem to be a happy person in here that lives in that area. That's all I got to say. I'm, I'm, you know.
I have a question. Important one. Do you have control of geese?
What did you mean? I don't know.
Do you have geese? Those ponds will, will draw them and they are pests. What do you do about that?
Well, answer your question.
There's nothing in the code about geese. Trump has been a builder wall.
Sure. Currently, the way these ponds are designed, they're not designed to hold water. The upper basin does for a time, but the lower basin is an infiltration basin and when you get the storms, I mean, after probably three, four days, it's going to be gone, hopefully, all the water. So it's not, hopefully, going to draw in geese like a permanent water surface pond is, is going to do.
Yeah, like mosquitoes. There's no water to build with mosquitoes.
Can I answer that? I have one of those next to my condo, like that. There are not any mosquitoes. And we're on North Pond, so North Pond has the geese problem, we really don't.
Yes, ma'am.
It's behind Wetlands, there's a couple of ponds right there and the geese are all over in the streets and holds up traffic if you go to, do the back road to the, to Wetlands. It can be a hazard because you're waiting there, waiting for these geese that go slowly across the road and there's ten cars behind you. That's probably, I don't know how you sit with a geese, that's not my problem.
Were the geese there first?
No, no. They're first, they're geese.
So a point of reference, you're not going to have geese over there because like you said, there's not going to be hold in water there. I've got a, an acre pond that in my, in my property down in East County, never had a goose in that, who's not a habit. Ducks, yes, but geese, no.
I mean, there's always been a problem, ever since the whole stormwater pollution retention plan program came into effect, where developments have to now control their stormwater with the construction of retention ponds. There's always been that yin yang problem when you create water, you attract waterfowl. The state unfortunately is turned a blind eye when it comes to pests, Canadian geese. It's just beyond the realm of planning board's capability.
We already have a ton bed there anyway.
What's that?
With the wetlands, we already have a ton anyway, it's a major flake, so I don't think this is going to make that easy. And I'm all about not having it there, but I don't think that's going to make a difference.
Some things we can work with and some things.
With the pond, real quick. The way they're designed, they're supposed to grow those high cattails and then vegetation around the pond. The problem is when developers come in and they keep the ponds pristine and not really functioning the way they're designed to be functioning because those cattails actually act like a filter. So all of the contaminants that enter into the water, those, the vegetation filters that out before it leaves and enters into the tributary that we're having a problem with, the tributaries go right to our lakes. And guess what? That's our drinking water. And so we're doing everything we can possible to make sure that the ponds not only handle volume, but quality. So, but when you mull around it and you take down those plants, the geese go, awesome, I'm going to have a family here. And they do. The, but when you have the high grass because of predators that hide in the high grass, the geese don't hang out. They go somewhere else like Wetlands, the shop, where you can shop everywhere. So, and the other thing like mosquitoes and things like that, it's brilliant the way God works with these ponds because it is a natural bio retention pond in the sense that like waterfowl will fly in and they'll have the eggs of fish on their web feet and drop them into the ponds. The fish grow and eat the mosquitoes. So it's a natural cycle that takes place in the pond, absolutely amazing. That's why you see people fishing in these things because there's fish in the pond. You say, how do the fish get there? The, the fowl will bring the fish in when they land in the water and the eggs come off their feet. There you go. Final jeopardy, you'll win, so.
Is that going to be in the minutes?
Okay, is there any further commentary, questions, issues or concerns from the general public?
Can you just leave the map up when everything's done so we can take a peek at it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are we all good? Everybody had your, state your piece, questions? All right. So, back to the board. Any final questions, issues, concerns? State now. Our fair goal tonight is for us to make a remediation budget for the, for the, for the, for the, to build fourteen structures and lots of, fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen structures. Eight point zero six, reception is in, a parentship. Anything else? So if there's nothing else, I would like to take a motion, probably the board review for, for area developments to be stopped. The building's on thirteen forty, thirteen point.
Just as a point of reference also, we have to contact the others about this merger and two tax parcels.
I'll make a motion for public remediation, so these are the.
And I'll ask, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion counts. So, in the next step, you might as well open your check off list.
All right, we want something to do before we go.
And then they pretty much.
Site and approval.
Sure.